This meeting to order. Ms. Huffman, please call roll.
John Price.
Present.
Lamar Russell.
Here.
Harry Pearson.
Here.
Dr. Miller? No, where is Dr. Miller? Okay.
Neither.
He's not here.
Penny Zucker?
Here.
Okay.
He's not, yes.
And Ms. Bass is our last member is on medical leave, so she will not be with us tonight. The Planning and Zoning Board will allow public comment on any item on the agenda at the time each agenda item is considered by the board. Quasi judicial items shall require a public hearing and public comments will be accepted at the time the hearing is opened. The board may limit citizens' comments to three minutes, except when additional time is required to afford due process for quasi judicial items. I think both of the items I have are for agenda items. There's no one wanting to discuss public comment on a topic that's not on our agenda tonight. All right, seeing that, we'll move on. There's no old business tonight, so we'll move to new business, beginning with number one, approval of the minute, meeting minutes from July 30th. Has the board members had an opportunity to review the minutes from the last meeting? Are there any changes that need to be made? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signaling by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, like sign, motion carries. Moving on to item number two, quasi judicial or public hearing, consideration and recommendation to the Board of Adjustment regarding special exception number 201901 to authorize a commercial parking facility in the M1 zoning district per City Code of Ordinances, Section 110609, BRB Enterprises LLP owner, parcel number 24-37150030. Mr. Dickey, do you have information for the board to consider tonight?
I do, Madam Chairman, thank you very much. My, typically I like to start out with a, I'm not going to say an exhaustive slide presentation, but I'm, mine's very limited tonight. The applicant has submitted a number of slides that I believe he's going to show the board during his presentation. So I'll be, my slides are very limited. I think I just have this one. So as you can see, this particular piece of property is, which is the subject for the special exception, is on the extreme north end of the city limits. As a matter of fact, the northern, the northern boundary of the city is the northern property line of this piece of property. And the parcel just to the north of this, as you can see where I'm pointing my arrow, is the city Cape Canaveral Volunteer Fire Department building. So I'm trying to orient, orient everybody where this is. Obviously, this is George King Boulevard up here. This is the off-ramp that I'm sure all of us have taken many, many times. But if you go up George King and you come south on Columbia Drive, which is, which is right here, it terminates, this is Columbia Drive, it terminates on its southern end into this property. As if, as the board recalls, just to the west of this property, on this piece of, this parcel here, was the location or is the location of the proposed Holiday Inn Hotel, which, which this board is, has considered. So, that being said, I'd like to go ahead and just briefly go over the staff report that's been prepared for the board. Again, this is special exception 201901. It's a special exception request for a commercial parking facility. And commercial parking facilities are allowed in the overlay district as a special exception. It's not allowed anywhere else in the city other than in the overlay district as a special exception. And which is, that's all spelled out in Section 110609, which is the section within the overlay district regulations. The parcel is 5.1 acres, and that is significant because the overlay district indicates that commercial parking facilities have to be on a property in excess of five acres. So this one does meet that requirement of 5.1 acres. So that's why we are moving forward. That's why it was eligible to be considered as a special exception. Again, the property is zoned M1. And we're not, here's so much to get into the site plan, that will be a separate, that'll be a separate process. But I did point out a number of things that kind of, there's a little bit of overlap. One is the, the height allowed in M1, which is 45 feet. And as the, as the board can see, and we'll, we'll go into that a little bit further detail later in the presentation, but the proposed improvement structures are one-story or less, so it far, it certainly meets the 45-foot height restriction. Also, the property is located within flood zone X, which is always a good thing, so that's a, outside of the 100-year flood zone. As I said earlier, and also as indicated in the bottom paragraph, this piece of property is going to be required to go through site plan approval, and that's where we'll apply all of the city's drainage standards and landscaping standards and circulation standards. All of those things will be dealt with at site plan. What we're doing, the special exception does have a site plan attached and associated with it, but we really, it's more of a, it's more of a, I'll call it a graphic representation. We're not really digging into the design standards and details that we do in site planning. One thing, really, the last thing I really want to talk about is, let me see if we've got that on here. I'm going to steal one of your slides, Tom. Uh, la, 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 la. Well, I won't. I don't want to go through your presentation. I think, but I, what I do want to say is, I'm sure all of you, to one degree or another, are aware that the city has been looking at an extension of Columbia Drive, a future extension of Columbia Drive, from where it is to the south. And a specific alignment has not been reached or agreed upon, because a lot of that property is port property. In, in concept, they've indicated that they're, they're willing to participate, but we haven't really got to the point where we've laid out a specific alignment for a future extension of Columbia. So there's some wording in the approval, there's some conditions that I've, I've drafted that we've put on this, this approval that would allow, or I shouldn't say allow, that would require the property owner to, and I think the term is I've used, to reconfigure the parking lot to accommodate a future improvement and extension of Columbia Drive. So since we don't know what that looks like today, but we know that that may be something the city and the port are interested in participating with and completing sometime in the future, some, some conditions were added to this approval that would require the applicant to, to, to work with the port and the city and to reconfigure the layout of the property to, to accommodate that future design and future road extension. So anyways, given, given all that, our staff is recommending approval of special exception number 201901 to the Board of Adjustment, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant at his cost shall reconfigure the parking lot layout to include utilities and drainage to accommodate any future extension of Columbia Road through the subject parcel. Number two, the applicant at his cost shall relocate any site improvements to accommodate legal use by adjacent property owners of the 20-foot ingress egress public utility and drainage easement located in the northwest portion of the property. And we'll get into, we'll have a little better picture of this here shortly, but as the board remembers, there's a, there's a hotel site here. And if the board remembers, there's a, there's a 40-foot access that runs, there's, it's, it runs along here. It runs off of Columbia Drive, does a 90-degree turn, and it runs to the west, over to the, over to the hotel parcel. Well, it's 40 feet, but the 40 feet, the, the actual parcel, there's a, it's a 20-foot section, and then there's a 20-foot easement on this particular piece of property. So the total, total of 40 feet. So what that second condition is saying is, hey, in the future, if that hotel parcel develops and you have improvements in that easement that need to be relocated due to that future driveway going back to the hotel, you are going to have to reconfigure those improvements. If you have a fence up, that'll have to be relocated. If there is a drainage swale in that easement, you will have to relocate that to accommodate that future driveway back to the hotel site. So, so, you know, possibly these two conditions will never be triggered, because, you know, but in anticipation of development of the hotel site, in anticipation of development or extension of Columbia Road, Columbia Drive, excuse me, Columbia Road, I'm sorry, these conditions were added to, to, to deal with that in the future, if, if it is required. Madam Chairman, I do have a Attachment 3, which is a special exception worksheet and staff analysis. It does go through and look at items such as land use and zoning, impact to surrounding properties. Number three is, what are hours of operation and how will they impact surrounding properties? Traffic and parking. Number five is public services, how will the proposal affect or impact public services? And then number six is miscellaneous impacts. I'm not sure what the board's preference is. We can go through these. I can tell you that the application meets the, all of the, the questions and the intent here. And essentially, what these questions are doing is making sure that the request is consistent and compatible with surrounding properties, which it is. I mean, you can see that, from the aerial, you can see it's, it's certainly a mixed bag in this area. We have some pretty heavy industrial uses. To the east, we have, I'll call it institutional and, and office uses to the north, and we have a lot of vacant property in the area. So what is being proposed certainly is not incompatible with the existing land uses and, and zoning M1, which is, this is zone can, can, allows for some pretty, pretty intensive uses. So this, this use, this proposed use certainly is consistent and compatible with, with the surrounding properties, the surrounding land use patterns and zoning districts. So I think in that sense, the, the proposed use is, is certainly checks off that box and meets those requirements. Let's see, impact, so I, that's number one, and two, land use and zoning and impact to surrounding properties. Number three is, what are the hours of operation and how will they impact surrounding properties? Not applicable. I mean, this is going to be a commercial parking facility, and we all have lived here long enough to know that, you know, it's, it's not a 24/7 operation. Parking facilities certainly have peaks during certain days of the week. And those, those peaks and valleys will be consistent with the, with the arrival and departure of the boats. What, one thing that is nice about this piece of property is the traffic that will be generated as a result of it will not, I'll say directly affect the city of Cape Canaveral. It's obviously, as, as we can see, it's going to be going north from this parcel into the port property itself. So that was another reason that, that staff or myself, we felt very comfortable with recommending approval of this. This is going to be really, the, the traffic will be, the majority of the traffic will be captured internal to the, to the port. Obviously, we will have people coming primarily from, you know, coming along 528 and getting off on George King and coming onto the property. There may be some people coming from the south on astronaut. I would say the, the amount's going to be pretty minimal. You know, understanding or how, how I think I understand the, you know, the, who the folks are on the boats, the passengers on the boats. So I think from a traffic standpoint, I think it's, it's going to be very nominal, traffic impact on city, city road facilities. Public services, you know, water and sewer, I'm going to let the applicant talk a little bit about the sewer, but water services to the site, police and fire are going to be handled by Brevard County, and obviously, there's a, there's a fire, fire terminal. You don't get much closer than that. They could walk to a response there. So I think public services will, will not be negatively affected. And again, this is going to be a very, very nominal impact due to, due to the nature of the use. I mean, if you think about it, how many toilet flushes there are going to be a day, or, you know, how many, you know, it's going to be very nominal.
Most are going to be anxious to get on the shuttle to get on the ship.
Yeah, that's right, exactly. And then miscellaneous impacts, you know, the such things as what is, what is the impact going to be to the natural environment? Historic, scenic and cultural resources, those type of things. And again, this is a, this piece of property is, I guess the best way to characterize it is a disturbed piece of property. This is not one of the pristine pieces of ground in the city of Cape Canaveral. So the, the, the natural, scenic, historic, cultural impacts, I mean, impacts to those, to those assets and resources is negligible. And let's see, and then, and then the final two questions, what type of impact will this have on the local economy? And will it have an adverse impact on housing and social conditions? Again, the local economy, I mean, we all recognize and realize the economic impact of the port on the city. And so this will be, certainly be bringing a, now a vacant piece of property. There'll be improvements placed on it. It will be, obviously, the taxable base will be increased. I mean, it's, it's not like, it's not another hotel, I will, I recognize that, you know, but if, if we look at the configuration of the parcel, I'm, I'm going to just throw out some numbers here. Approximately, this, this parcel is 700 feet long by 125 feet wide. So there's, it's, what can be done on this piece of property is very limited. And due to its location, it just, this just seems to make a, makes sense, this particular use. Anyways, again, I think that the, the, it's a good use, it's a good use for this piece of property. And we do recommend approval, subject to those two conditions that I previously read, Madam Chairman, thank you. And the, the applicant is here. I know he has a presentation. And I, Madam Chairman, it's your, at your discretion whether you want them to go now, or however you want to handle it, it's fine.
Well, at this point, since you are our only speaker and you have a presentation, I'm not going to limit you to three minutes, so you can give it to us. You may come up.
Tom, if you just want to give me some kind of cue and I'll forward the slides for you.
Did you have to talk into the microphone?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, members of the council, my name is Tom Hermanson. I reside at 400 Serendipity Lane, Merritt Island, Florida. I think Mr. Dickey pretty much covered everything. I'm not going to belabor you. Didn't take much of your time with a long presentation. Really just wanted to be present, obviously, to answer any specific questions that you may have. And I put a few slides together, just outlining the highlights, if you could roll that one. Oh, I think we have it here. I think Mr. Dickey already touched on these. Understand the sensitivity of requests for special exceptions. The city obviously has the process in place in order to provide additional consideration for development opportunities that aren't first and foremost permitted uses in the various zoning districts. So as such, I made an attempt to, at length, answer all the various requirements under the special exceptions, which you would have found in the cover letter to my application. I don't believe, unless you have any specific questions as to my statements there, we need to run through those. But this is an industrial piece of property with very heavy industrial uses around them. My partners and I, the Mayes, and that, that own this land, we've marketed it for many years for various uses and on a lease or build-to-suit basis and have not had any takers. We've mulled the notion of a commercial parking facility for many years because of the demand in and around the port for this. The port doesn't like to commit, admit it, the commissioners and the staff, they really, they like that money that they make on an annual basis from their parking fees, but they also recognize now, after a couple of administrations, that they really have to have off-site parking because they can't handle the peak loads because of how, you know, when a, a 4,000-person ship comes in and fills up a parking garage, and then two days later, another ship comes in and tries to fill that same parking garage, they really can't accommodate anybody. So this off-site parking happens throughout Cocoa Beach and Cape Canaveral at hotels, as well as some of the other off-site parking facilities. Although this is designed to be 400 spaces, it's really a small amount relative to the overall demand, which as we all know is growing with the addition of the cruise terminal two on the south side of the port. So we decided now, after many years of considering it, to try to move forward with this. We honestly feel that it's a very negligible, if not positive, impact to the city of Cape Canaveral in that it should logically take cars that might otherwise find their way into the city to find alternative parking in Cape Canaveral and/or Cocoa Beach to the south and divert that traffic into the port area. As far as the citizenry of Cape Canaveral are concerned, for all intents and purposes, I think eight, eight persons out of 10 in the city would almost assume that this is port property. It is bordered to the south by 13 acres of port property, undeveloped property, as well as being right on the border of the port. Will only be utilizing port roads as access for ingress and egress. So with that, I don't really have anything else to add, but be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'd, I'd like to just quickly whip through the slides.
Sure.
I think they're informative for the board.
I would agree.
Again, the parcel really, this, this is only intended to show the, show the surrounding areas and their intensive uses. The aggregate piles, the photo doesn't do them justice, but that's obviously a very heavy industrial use. Of note is the fact that the training tower and the fire station is on, pretty much on the property line to this property. And the fire marshal does, you know, they actively burn things in that building, which will probably present some operational challenges, but you really couldn't put a building so close to somewhere where they actively, you know, light that tire, tower on fire. And that was one of the considerations in this, this use. The hotel site, should it develop, I'm in the hotel business here in town, partners with Mr. Barker on the development of those, those two other hotels. Should that hotel site develop eventually, this would be a, a beneficial use. You've seen their site plan and how they plan to, I think, have 40 to 45 spaces of elevated parking, like Manhattan-style parking. So they certainly need additional parking should, should that plan develop and could potentially leave spaces here at this facility. So it would be a complimentary use. This is a rendering based on our design, which we'll be submitting as soon as possible for approval to the city. It's a one-story structure. We've gone above and beyond with respect to, there's really no requirements for structure, but we wanted to provide people covered walkway because of the length of the, of the, of the parcel. It's in fact 1,350 feet end to end.
Oh.
So the majority of it, we are
That was way off.
Providing covered parking as well as unloading and offloading central core that will have an air-conditioned space as well as a small facility for ticketing and, and two restrooms for people that are there. But as you said, Madam Chairman, the majority of people are literally parking, unloading their bags, getting on a bus and being taken to a terminal. There's no intention for anybody to, to be spending time here. The hours of operation will be 8:30 in the morning to probably 3, 3, 3:30 PM on cruise days, currently five days a week. So there's a very pretty rendering with 1950s vintage cars. I don't know why that rendering guy always puts those old Cadillacs in there. This is the parcel. The stormwater system is unique in that the entire site will be a pervious concrete system. So instead of having a retention pond, this entire site will retain the water and it'll go above and beyond St. John's Stormwater Management District requirements, both for retention and detention and settling of nutrients. So they, they are big fans of these types of systems because of the quantity that they hold, as well as the filtration properties of filtering all the water through pervious concrete, through a membrane, then through 18 inches bedrock, and then down into the ground. So that there's, you know, even in heavy storm events, it's all kept on-site essentially, and it doesn't necessarily rush off to the site, which you sometimes get in, in typical drainage ditches and, and pond-type systems. We're doing this at considerable additional expense, although it does afford us additional parking spaces where there otherwise would be a, a retention pond. Ingress and egress is intended to be on Columbia Road. Staff, several staff members asked if there shouldn't be relief access to Discovery. We put in an emergency gate onto Discovery, but that will be closed, except for emergency vehicles, should they need to enter from that side for any reason. It will be gated for security reasons. It will be lighted, but very modestly. The intention is to put lighting underneath the canopy just to kind of give some sense of security in the evening. No light poles are intended to be installed so that you won't see it from anywhere in the city. You know, the only place in the city where you can actually see this parcel from is just as you come over the overpass. But with all the landscaping and everything else that we are, have to put in, based on the landscaping code, you'd be hard pressed to see it, except just as you peek at the overpass. That's really it. There's really no reason for anybody in Cape Canaveral to come down these roads, Columbia, unless they're coming to this facility. So it's not a pedestrian area. You see a couple of slides there of the, the design of the, the rest structure. Kind of modern in design, but, you know, nothing too elaborate. Those high structures will span about 50, 60 feet in order for buses, vans to come underneath and, and be covered from the elements. And the building is a few, I think 300 and some odd square feet with a couple of restrooms, and again, some vending, and a, a place for, for people to purchase tickets to park there, should they not have already pre-booked. This long canopy structure, again, is purely intended for convenience and allow people to get out of the rain, should it be raining when they're parking their cars, and not have to walk the length of the property uncovered. And that's the extended slides that I prepared. If there's any questions.
Stop that, stop that.
Go one more slide. There it is. I have a question for that slide, if you're ready to.
That's fine.
Let's do it. The extension of Columbia Road, if we ever do that, it'll either go across the parking lot, or it'll have to have a dog leg. What's the thinking about that?
So the easement, you can see some faint lines to the north. That, there is in fact a 100-foot right-of-way, which is like a boulevard, it's almost like A1A. That easement was granted to the port as part of the taking action. The port and the DOT actually took property from BRB in order to create the overpass. Happened in 1990, I believe. And as part of that, reciprocal easements were granted. So hypothetically, the port and the city could say, we want a Schon's Lizeth-style boulevard, and we would just have to come in here and redesign this. For all intents and purposes, a roadway of that nature would probably be 40 feet in width, you know, with some curbing potentially, potentially not, which is essentially highlighted by the dark area in the middle. That dark area in the middle covers above and, about 50 feet. That dark area in the middle covers above and, about fifty feet, which would be a reasonably wide road. So should the city and the port agree, and the port would have to mitigate their thirteen acres, because it's pure wetland now, uh, at great expense, uh, should the port and the city agree eventually to bring that roadway through there, we would just simply move the gate, move the fencing, probably realign some curbs, and then just fence the sides as opposed to fencing across the middle.
And the, and the road will go straight north-south across the parking lot?
Yes, sir.
So then you'd have parking-
Well, then we wouldn't have parking in the, in the right-of-way, uh, in the drive-
Well, I understand that, you're not going to park in the right-of-way.
Yes, sir.
But, uh, so you'll have parking to the east and parking to the west. You'd have to cross a, uh-
We would have to put in a crosswalk, yes.
Have to cross a, uh, busy, or not busy, but a-
I doubt it will be busy.
A through-traffic.
Yes, sir.
So your thought is to just leave it as it is, take it straight north-south instead of having the dog leg around the property?
Well, the dog leg wouldn't work because there's no right-of-way there, and I-
I'm not advocating that, I'm just asking about it.
I, y- yes, the way the right-of-way works, the traffic would pass through the property, if you can see Columbia there, it would pass through. And the design, if it was expansive beyond what we're already allowing, uh, in this current design, would really only take some minor surface improvements, some curbs, and we would take our gate and pull the fence back and move the gate and create two gates on either side as opposed to one gate across.
Okay, I get it.
Any other questions? Mr. Garganese.
The, 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 the,[861.12]
The special exception is to go through a unique approval process. And that process essentially comes to the P and Z board, and the board considers it in a public hearing and makes a recommendation to the Board of Adjustment. And the Board of Adjustment is the final, they make the final decision on whether that special exception will be approved or denied. So, given that, I have just one slide I want to show. And this is a slide, this is a zoning map of the city. And again, this request is for mini warehousing, I'm going to have to get, self-storage, storage facilities, to be a special exception in the C2 zoning districts. And the C2 is that pink area. There's, we have two C2 districts in the city. We have a fairly large district up here in the north of the city, if I can get my arrow to move around, which is really hard, right here, I'm going to, it's as close as I'm going to get. And that is centered on Central Boulevard. So, and the second district we have is down here in the southern end of the city, well, towards the southern end, right here. And that is centered on Center Street. And that is, the old boom and barrier was located back there, and it's, it's, it's a signalized intersection, as is Central to the north. So those would be the two areas of the city, again, those are the two C2 districts, that would be affected by this request, if it's, if it's ultimately approved, again, if it's ultimately approved. So, that's, those are, those are the areas that we're talking about, and I think it's important to keep that in mind, too. The city currently has a number of mini storage facilities to include several locations on Imperial, which is up on the north part of the city, up towards Central Boulevard. And Imperial is this, this, this road that Florida Beer is located on. There are some mini warehousing back behind, further to the, to the northeast of Florida Beer, and North Atlantic. And there are some, there are some existing facilities on North Atlantic, and the particular one that jumps to mind is the one at the intersection of North Atlantic, and that's where Central turns over to East Central, right here. There's a mini warehouse facility there as well. "The existing inventory of mini storage units is generally older with very little aesthetic appeal." And I'll just leave it at that. The board can decide what that means and how you want to interpret that. You're, you're very familiar with the existing inventory of, of, of mini warehousing we have in the city. "A number of these facilities are located in C1 and C2 zoning districts, which means they are currently non-conforming." And why I say that is, our current code only allows mini warehousing in the M1 district. So we have all of these legacy or non-conforming mini warehousing facilities throughout the city. Most of them are in C1 or C2, not allowed there anymore, they're non-conforming. Anytime we have a non-conforming property, redevelopment is, I'll just say, challenging. And so, I'll just leave it at that for right now. Again, I'm going to continue reading on the, in that paragraph. "These restrictions effectively eliminate the opportunity for redevelopment of the non-conforming existing mini warehouse facilities. With the adoption of the proposed ordinance, redevelopment of these non-conforming facilities and associated property improvements would become possible, or greatly facilitated. Adoption of the proposed ordinance would revise/establish locational, design, and operational requirements for these facilities." And we'll get into the ordinance in just a second to kind of go through those, but they're in, there's in Section 110-459 of the proposed ordinance. "Also, a new definition of self-service storage facility would be established." So the old term of mini warehousing goes away, and we're, we're redefining it as a self-service storage facility, and we'll talk a little bit about that, that new definition, as well as a number of conforming amendments throughout Articles 10, nine and 10 of the zoning code. So, the next page, actually, the next, the next page and a half is straight out of the proposed ordinance. And these are the proposed design and operational standards that we're suggesting or recommending be approved as part of this ordinance. And as I said, I mean, I think I'm staff, right? I mean, I don't, I'm not going to say staff, it's me. I, I'm looking at this ordinance as an opportunity to redevelop these existing mini warehouse facilities we have around the city. And you know, and frankly, I, you know, they're just not aesthetically appealing right now. And if you look at modern, uh, storage facilities, you know, you guys have seen them, around Tampa and Orlando and Daytona, and Cocoa Beach has a, has a fairly new one. These look like, I'm going to say, they look like office buildings. It's very difficult to tell, say, wow, that is a storage facility, because the gist of the, of the architectural and design standards that are being placed on new facilities. So the only way that, well, I'm not going to say the only way, but the, the way we're going to greatly enhance the opportunity to redevelop our existing inventory is to take them out of their, the non-conforming status and to make them special exceptions, so we can, we can attach these standards to them, and we can look at them on a case-by-case basis. Now, a lot of these standards, well, let's just go to the operational requirements now. You know, we're, we're suggesting things like, can't use them as residences, or offices, or workshops, storage of flammable explosive materials cannot, is prohibited, no storage of gasoline-powered motor vehicles, keeping of animals is prohibited, they'll be within enclosed buildings, temporary storage units or shopping, shipping containers are prohibited, you know, things like this. And let's just jump right into the actual ordinance now. If we flip the page, you can see at the heading, it says, "Ordinance Number XX2019." Is everybody there? Okay. We won't go through all the whereasses. But if we go down into the, into the zoning, and the top of that, top of Page 2 of 6 of the ordinance, we can see where we're striking mini, mini storage, and we're creating a new definition of self-service facility. Let me, let's read that, because that's, that's pretty important. "Self-service facility means an establishment containing separate storage spaces that are leased or rented to customers as individual units. The term is synonymous with mini warehouses, mini storage, self-storage facilities, and self-storage warehouse. When used for such a purpose, such property may not be used in combination with any other use, with the exception of storage garage." Now, further down into that page, we, we, we show that in Section 110-343, which is the special exceptions allowed under the C2 district, we can see that new one is being added, number three. And we go to the next page, 3 of 6, we're basically, we're, again, eliminating mini storage, because that is a term that we're not using anymore, and we're replacing it with self-storage, self-service storage facility. And then this is a, this is the, the, the critical part, is we get into the design standards and the operational requirements. So I want to talk a little bit about the design standards, because those are, those "The following minimum design shall apply to the construction of new self-service storage facility, or to the maximum extent feasible, the expansion or redevelopment of existing self-storage facilities." And that's important language right there, because some of these existing storage facilities, we're not going to be able to apply all of these standards to them, it's just, it's just impossible. So that language is important. To the maximum extent feasible, we will apply these new operational standards and design standards. Again, well, and I'll, and I'll run through these pretty quickly. "Number 2. Storage facilities shall be designed to ensure that access to individual storage units shall only be gained from the interior of the building. Individual storage units shall not exceed 300 square feet." "Number 4. If the storage facility abuts a residentially-zoned property or existing residential development, the facility loading bays, entrance, docks, or doors shall be not located on any side abutting the residentially-zoned property or residential development." "Number 5. Loading docks, bays, entrances to individual storage units or bays may not be located on a street-facing, uh, street-facing side of a building." "Number 6. Storage facility access shall be secured such that access to the individual storage units shall only be gained from entering the building through a secured access point." "Number 7. Storage facility buildings shall be surfaced in high-quality materials compatible and in harmony with the site. Unfaced concrete block, painted masonry, tilt-up and pre-cast concrete panels, and prefabricated metal sheets are prohibited. Prefabricated buildings are not allowed." So what we're doing here is we're saying, hey, we don't want any more of that stuff. We, we have enough of that already. If, if, if we're going to have any new, new self-service storage facilities, we want them to look nice. "Number 8. Exterior colors, including any internal corridors or doors visible through, through windows, shall be muted." "Number 9. The facade of the storage facility building shall not, shall have exterior vertical surfaces with at least 50% of the area covered by a material or a combination of materials, such as decorative brick, veneer, stone, stucco, textured block, or similar decorative materials." "Number 10 is similar to that. Number 11. Storage buildings, storage facility buildings resembling long, traditional warehouse buildings are prohibited. Streetscape landscaping required by city code shall not be fenced. There'll be, electric service to the storage units shall be for lighting and climate control only. The minimum lot size shall not be less than 1 and 1/2 acres." That's an important one. And what that means is, we don't want, you know, if, if you're, if we're going to have a new storage facility, we want it to be a, we, we don't want a little, a bunch of little onesie-twosie storage facilities. And a perfect example is right over here, back behind the library, if you guys don't know the one I'm talking about. We don't want that. Again, I've talked a little bit about the operational requirements already. I'm going to, Madam Chairman, staff is recommending approval of the ordinance. However, I want to just invite Anthony, I'm not sure he'll take me up on it, but invite Anthony, if there's anything that you'd like to, you'd like to add to the presentation. Anthony was certainly involved in the drafting of the ordinance. And I'd like to say that it's a, it's a, it's, we used some best practices, and we certainly looked around Central Florida when, when this was being prepared. But it certainly would, would help clean up and improve some of the opportunity sites we have in the city right now. But Anthony, is there anything that you'd like to add?
No, nothing right now, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. I do have one commenter, Ronald Abelis. If you'd like to approach the podium, give us your name, and you have, I'll let you speak as long as you need to.
Shouldn't be too long. My name is Ron Abelis. I am currently a resident at 393 Harbor Drive in Cape Canaveral, and I also own the property we're in question at 190, we'll call it 190 Center Street, which is right there by Spectrum, and, right down on Center. And I love the city of Cape Canaveral, okay? I love where I live, and I only want what's, what's best for the, for the city. So, when I purchased the property, I would say about 10 years, I think it was in '09 I bought it, I always had in the back of my mind, I wanted to put a, a, a facility in there, a mini warehouse, or self-storage facility. Since that time, the zoning has changed, and I didn't even realize that they, they changed it, I mean, they're not even telling me that, they took that ability to put a mini warehouse complex, or self-storage, excuse me, on the property. And I was kind of shocked when I heard that, and I wasn't sure why it was done, but I was kind of told that they were trying to clean up the city, and clean up the corridor. But I didn't, I don't think that people really thought it out properly, because, as Mr. Dickey said, these facilities nowadays are, are first-class buildings, they're done like first-class, you can't even tell they're, that they're a self-storage facility, they look like condos almost sometimes. And I was very pleased to hear all the requirements that he's putting on this, because those are pretty much everything that I want to do. I want to have, be able to get in, access only from the interior, you're going to walk into this place, it's going to be lighted, it's going to be highly secure, it's going to be gated. And currently, if you're not familiar with it, I do have a special exception for outside storage on that property. To be quite honest with you, it isn't a pretty sight, okay? It's, you know, hodgepodge of boats and trailers and stuff like that, and it's going to make the, it's going to make a big improvement for the city, it's going to be a big, I think, tax-based boon for the city, because if I put a, the, the property is 2, up 2.2 acres. Because of the size, it can't be like a bunch of, you know, we're, like I said, we're going away from the bunch of little garages. It's going to be a nice first-class building, with all the landscaping that needs to be to code, up to code, and because of the size, it's going to have to be multi-story. By the way, I want to say this to you, too, it's, is a need for it, because I don't, I barely advertise the outside storage. I would say at least twice a week, I get a phone call, do you have a 5 by 10? Do you have a 10 by 10? And I go, no, I only have outside storage for boats and trailers and stuff like that. So without even really going out there trying to advertise, I'm getting requests for these, you know, air-conditioned and, you know, 10 by, you know, separate spaces. So, with, with that being said, I, also, the impact on the, on the roadway is minimal, because, you know, nobody, it's not like, hey, 9 o'clock, everybody comes in and works, it's a, people just show up at their facility, their little garage, whenever, so the impact's going to be minimal, I believe. And again, I think it's just going to be a win-win for the city all the way around. I want to clean it up, I want to make it, you know, it's like, it's security. Another thing, I, just my own opinion, if you, ma'am, if you were going to go to a self-storage place up north, it's kind of tou, it's kind of rough up there. It's dark, it's, it's not real pretty up there. So I think that, you know, someone, an older woman who wants to store her stuff, she's going to be very happy to come to a place all lighted, in the center of town, and, you know, it's already around a bunch of warehouses, so it's not, you know, it's not like it's stuck up there. So, with that being said, and I mean, Mr. Dickey said a lot of things that I agree with, and I'm hoping that you see that, it's going to be nothing but a positive thing for the city of Cape Canaveral, and you'll approve it for me.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Before I open it up for board discussion, Mrs. Melissa Bass, who is not able to be with us due to a leave she is on, sent me a letter that she wanted to provide to the board members, you all have a copy in front of it. It is a rather lengthy letter, I'm not going to read it into the minutes, Ms. Huffman does have it for the record. There is, the last two paragraphs I am going to read, just so we have that information in front of us, beginning on the last paragraph of the first page. Ms. Bass says, "I see approval of this item is clearly contradictory to the city's vision of a residential and business-friendly atmosphere that is livable, attractive, safe, and inclusive. A sustainable coastal community that embraces the ocean side, riverside, as key amenities, and supports and promotes local tourism, culture, recreation, resiliency, commerce, municipal civil and civic interests, and education. If mini storage is considered a key amenity, the city already has excess and should not imprudently encourage utilizing the land in such a non-beneficial manner against zoning in ordinance. Overabundance of ill-placed mini storage does nothing to further, quote, 'an engaged and compassionate community that transforms blighted and unfinished buildings into attractive structures, offers citywide green spaces, provides exceptional parks with ample shade, and supports businesses that enhance economic viability while serving our residents and visitors with goodwill.'" "As I stated in July 2018, our needs, innovation, and creativity to fill our commercial spaces not fast-profit, low-hanging fruit that brings no experiential enrichment to our city. The city's zoning should not be amended to accommodate landowners who are either unwilling to find appropriate ways to use the land in accordance with the zoning, or sell to someone who is willing to do this. If our precedent is set, allowing landowners to obtain code exceptions without rock-solid, clear, long-term benefit to our citizens and our city's stated goals, I believe our board is not doing its job." So those are the words of Ms. Bass. Board members, you do have her full letter, and she does address at the beginning more of the meeting back in July.
Can I discuss that again? Can I discuss that?
I, I think board's going to have discussion right now, it's, it's...
I have a question, is it? Because is it still open for a question?
Yes, I'll go ahead and take your question.
I don't know if I need to come up there or not.
Yes, I need you to come up and give your name, and then when you're done, I need you to complete a comment card from out inside, so we have it for public record.
My name's Joe Kovak, I'm a Merritt Island resident. I'm a real estate broker, and I have interest in the discussion here in the sense of the C2 zoning. My question is, this is a, a possible change to the C2 within the city entirely, correct?
Correct.
Not just Center Street?
It's the whole, it's the whole C2 zoning within the city of Cape Canaveral, yes, sir.
Just wanted to make sure, that is my question. But I do have a comment, in that the properties that I have listed for sale are on Center Street, are in C2 zoning, and I've had in the past several self-service storage type of companies that have wanted to purchase those properties and redevelop them, and they were not able to do that because the zoning did change. We got caught in the middle. And so, for what it's worth, from a professional perspective, there would be improvement that would have been made, or would be, being made today, if those things were allowed in that C2 zoning, for what it's worth, that's my professional experience in the city of Cape Canaveral currently.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, I'll open this up for board discussion. Mr. Price, we'll start with you.
No comments at this time.
No comments. Mr. Russell?
Mrs. Price's letter is very well reasoned and thought out, and, and I, I get where she's, where she's going with this, trying to minimize a, an incursion, or a, or a invasion, or a, I don't know what to call it, an epidemic of mini storage. But I, I think we need to remember that, first, we're going to talk about, or, or we're going to put in, we're going to entertain putting in, a new ordinance that has some pretty good requirements to dress up storage facilities and, and have them meet very good requirements to, for city appearance. I, I agree with that. So that's one hurdle addressed. The other hurdle is, you know, special exceptions are not giveaways. Just because we're putting it in as a use in a special district, or a certain district, doesn't mean it's a giveaway. Special exception says you can apply for a special exception, and if it is approved, you can use the property accordingly. Let's look at the special exception at a little more depth. If you read the little green book I wrote, there's a chapter in there about special exceptions, about requirements, and hurdles you've got to get over, and realization it ain't a giveaway. Usually, the impacts are well-studied and well-adressed, and we all get comfortable that the impacts have been addressed and we're okay. Go ahead and use your property. But the real decision boils down to compatibility. Neighborhood compatibility, key word. There are books written about how to define compatibility, because it's hard to get your hands around it. Well, taking into consideration Melissa's concern, again, it, but my, my feeling is that I can, in good conscience, vote for the special exception recommendations we're making tonight, and add it, add to the code, because the real decision, as I said before, boils down to neighborhood compatibility. That means that we, the Planning and Zoning Board, get to look at it before you get to do it. So we can throttle it, we can throttle the use, we can throttle the number, but we have to apply the code, everybody gets due process, but it has to be throttled by neighborhood compatibility. So if you're going to open a storage unit, like we're talking about tonight, it's got to fit. It's got to fit the neighborhood it's in, it's got to be dressed up, and I think the code we're talking about tonight would do that. So that's what gives me the comfort level, that I can go ahead and vote for this tonight. But in the end, you have to make the case for compatibility. And in the end, the Planning and Zoning Board gets to rejoin against compatibility, and make it hard, or make it easy, or, or I should say, a, a better use of the terminology is to delve into what the place looks like, feels like, how it fits with the rest of the neighborhood. That's what we get to do. Neighborhood compatibility is the key to a special exception. So having said all that, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Mr. Pearson, do you have any discussion?
Yes, I agree with Lamar. We had been, in fact, we got rid of our group of special exceptions, and made them all, that they just couldn't be used. This one is complicated. I'm able, able to go along with it as written, though it may take extra work for the planning and zoning.
It has, it has a lot of requirements.
Yes, sir.
It has a lot of requirements, a lot of added requirements we haven't had before.
Yes.
That's what I'm seeing, that it looks complicated, but if we work through it, we can work through it.
Right.
Mr. Pearson, anything else?
That's all, ma'am.
All right, for myself, Mr. Dickey, just a couple of questions, if I may. Existing storage now, the one back here, the one up by the port, under the current code, they can't fix that up. We're stuck with it as it is until it's destroyed, or they sell it to someone else.
Can I, that's, yes and no.
Okay.
I mean, there, there, there is op, because it's a non-conforming use, you can, you can give maintenance, you can provide maintenance.
But you can't tear it down and build a brand-new storage facility.
Correct.
And that's more of where I was going.
Get modified.
Can't ma, make major modifications. And if, with the approval of this, any new facilities being proposed in the city would have to come before the Planning and Zoning Board for approval, this does not make it, yeah, you can just start building them, correct?
Unless it's in the M1 district.
Unless it's in the M1.
Now, if it's an industrial, it's permitted by right.
Right, but in the C2 district, which we're talking about, they couldn't just start building.
Correct.
I know for myself, the first year I moved here, moved into a very small townhouse, and I needed storage. And you're right, my storage that I had to go to, I wasn't going to by myself, the big man in yellow went with me, because there were a lot of people walking around there that I would not have been safe being there. I also lost a lot of value, sympathetic value items, because there was no environmentally-controlled storage available. And while I was not... And while I was not on the board back in July, I, I was in the audience because that was the night I was interviewed for the board. And that, for me, was something very important, is having some environmentally-controlled storage for those of us, because most of our homes in the city are much smaller, we're not going to be able to fit, most people coming here aren't going to fit a 4,000-square-foot home and the home. So I see this as a positive. I see it as maybe an opportunity for some of these blighted, existing self-storage to maybe make a positive change to improve our city. And I see it as an opportunity for, if we do agree that the right usage is a new facility, as you said, Mr. Russell, we've got some good code here to ensure it meets the vision of the community. I do think Ms. Bass had, wrote a very well letter, and I know she feels very passionately about this, but at this point, I think, I like this code because at least we can improve what we have or encourage people to improve what we currently have and have a safer environment. Any other board discussion? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number XX-2019 to City Council?
So moved.
Mr. Russell, move. Mr. Pearson, seconded. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes unanimously. Give me one second to find the second back set of my notes, they've gotten mixed in here. And I know that Ms. Huffman needs me to discuss a, an item in reports and discussions. So before I open it up to the board, if I may, I've been notified that we need to schedule a special meeting, preferably on September 11th. This would be in addition to the September 24th meeting. And Ms. Huffman was looking for us to be able to say tonight whether we are available for that. I am available. Mr. Price, I believe you said you were. So Mr. Russell and Mr. Pearson, September 11th, that is a Wednesday night.
Can I interrupt, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I want to make sure we've got that date correct. What we're attempting to do is get something to the City Council at their September 16th. Is it 16th or 17th?
There it says 17th, so the 11th would be the Wednesday before.
Okay. The, the issue I'm going to have then, if we try on the 11th, is the agenda's already gone out to the City Council.
All right.
It goes out the Tuesday before, so we'd have to do it on the September 4th, two weeks from tonight, September 4th.
My mistake.
That's okay. So make that September 4th, gentlemen?
Which is right after the day.
And I am, I am still available for that.
In addition to the Septen, September 24th regular meeting.
Yes, this would be a, yes, in addition to September 24th.
So what are we going to talk about?
We are going to, we are going to talk about a land use ordinance, a proposed land use ordinance to address some challenges we have on Oak Lane.
Yeah, we need to have that conversation.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
That needs to occur. Mr. Russell, do you think you're available on the 4th?
Yeah, I'm good.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
And I believe, I'm going to, not hold me to Dr. Miller, but I believe he will be available also. So there you go, September 4th. Yep, we're good.
Thank you.
All right. Do I have any board discussion from anyone, Mr. Pearson? Mr. Russell? Mr. Price?
No discussion.
I have nothing tonight myself, so seeing no other business before the board, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. We have motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.